Hi, good morning, everyone.
Yeah.
Oh. Good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order the House Committee on Labor. Today is April 11, 2025, and we are in Conference Room 309. Today's testimony will be limited to one minute. First on the agenda, we have SCR 63 related to a Workforce Excellence Award. First to testify is Jade Bhutai, Director, Department of Labor and Industrial Relations, in person.
Good morning, Chair Sayama, Vice Chair Lee. I'm Jade Bhutai, Director of the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. We stand on our testimony in strong support. Many good jobs don't require a four-year degree. Having a Workforce Excellence Program will allow young people to learn that there are legitimate options that are equal to going to a university. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Are there any other testifiers in person or on Zoom? That's all the testimony we got. Okay, moving on. SCR 145 related to paid family leave. First up, testify Michael Golo-Yu Jr. from the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission on Zoom.
Not present.
Not present. Next, Tia Harstok, Director of Office of Wellness and Resilience, in support, in person.
Aloha, Tia Harstok, Director, Office of Wellness and Resilience. We stand in strong support of this resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Up, Yasmin Chaney, Executive Director, the Hawaii State Commission of the Status of Women, in support, in person.
Hi, Yasmin Chaney, Executive Director for the Commission on the Status of Women. I stand on my written testimony in strong support, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brenna Hashimoto, Director of the Department of Human Resources Development, comments in person.
Hi, good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Brenna Hashimoto, Director of the Department of Human Resources Development. We'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments regarding the composition of the employer representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jade Bhutai, Director of DLIR, in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Jade Bhutai for DLIR. You know, we stand on our testimony in support. You know, the paid family leave will require careful crafting of the program to ensure that it's positioned for success. As such, we look forward to working with all stakeholders in partnership on this shared endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kelly Lopez, State Director of AARP, in support, in person.
Aloha, thank you. Just really excited about the opportunity this resolution provides to all of us and, as indicated, appreciate DLIR's support. And we're just eager to work with all of the partners and the state departments to finally make paid family leave available. We hope passage of legislation in the next session. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Nicole Wu, Director of Research for HCAN, in support, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you for hearing this resolution. We are in strong support, and I'll stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Andrade, President and CEO, Catholic Charities Hawaii, in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Betty Lou Larson, representing Catholic Charities Hawaii. We strongly support this because this is the kind of clientele that will come to our agency, and we don't like them to see, we don't want to have them choose between having a job and caring for a loved one, whether it's an elder, a disabled child, a newborn. All of those are situations with our clients can put them in homelessness because they just don't, they're struggling to pay the basic bills. So we really appreciate this time. We think it's a good time to study it, really get down in the nitty-gritty and find what's a fair and financially long-term sustainable program would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Golo-Yu Jr., Pride at Work Hawaii, in support, on Zoom.
Not present.
Michael, not present. Next up, also on Zoom, Michelle Bartel, President and CEO, Aloha United Way, in support.
Not present.
Next up, Jamie Morgan, Senior Region Lead, American Heart Association, in support, in person. Joel Edwards, Wainihau Country Market, in support, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you so much for hearing this today. I've been working with this for several years now. We're so excited to hopefully see this pass legislation next year. As a small business owner, I am in full support. I stand by my comments. I'm also the Chair of the Kauai County Democratic Party, and we are also in support. But I also want to speak in the fact of our rural and our outer islands where this measure would be so important for us, as most of the patients have to fly to these, to your island, and family members are left to choose what to do. And so I urge you to support this, and I thank you for your time today. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify, Christian Fern, Executive Director for UPA, in support, in person. Thank you. Joshua Wish, President of the Holomoo Collaborative, in support.
My Chair, thank you. We'll stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Also have Christian Zuli in support, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you so much for letting us come together and speak on this. I'm also strongly in support of this, as I ultimately believe that Hawaii deserves paid family leave. As heard in my, or read in my written testimony, our family was one of those families who, during a really difficult pregnancy with a, with a one-year-old baby and a husband who was struggling with sleep deprivation, we unfortunately lost his job because of his symptoms and because he was trying to care for me while working close to 60 hours a week. And had we had been offered paid family leave, I believe that our family would be much better off financially. My husband would not have had to return to shipping. Our children only see him six months out of the year. He has missed many firsts in their lives, and it has disrupted our family unit in irreparable way. So I would hate to see other families go through this for various reasons, and I stand strongly with my written testimony. So thank you so much, and we're in support of this. Aloha.
Aloha, thank you. Is there anyone else in person on Zoom here to testify? Okay, we also received testimony from Executive Office on Aging, the Hawaii County Council, District Two, the Honolulu County Committee on the Status of Women, Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition, President and Children Together, Hawaii State AFL-CIO, HGEA, the Emua Alliance, the Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus, ACLU, the Health Committee of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, AAUW Hawaii, Aloha Care, the Americans for Democratic Action, Hawaii Public Health Institute, and 42 individuals in support. Members, any comments or questions?
For DLIR. So I appreciate the supportive intent behind your testimony. You noted in your testimony perhaps the need for a $1.5 million appropriation for legal analysis and study. You broke this down further with a $250,000 for federal and state law conflicts, $500,000 for actuarial study, $750,000 for independent consultant facilitation to implement a paid family leave program. I'd like, if you can, elaborate a little bit more on the actuarial study and what this study would perhaps highlight and help your department understand how to best implement this policy.
Chair, let me ask our Administrator of Disability Compensation Division, Joanne Videnhart, to elaborate.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. Joanne Videnhart, Administrator, thank you for the question. The actuarial analysis really is to look at the Hawaii data. And so it's on the workforce, it's the employers, as well as the beneficiaries that could be eligible for family-paid medical leave.
Okay. I understand that DLIR is subscribed to, I believe, some kind of data-sharing network, the Hawaii Employers System. And, you know, this shares essentially what you described, right? Employers in Hawaii, the type of employees. I'm just curious, what this actuarial analysis, you know, are you going to RFP the study out? You know, how is this analysis going to take place? How long is it going to take for DLIR to complete the analysis?
It's not something that we have the resources for, so we will be going out for a consultant to do that. So the first thing is the timeline to get a consultant onboard. And so going out for an RFP, as long as we have responses to the RFP, that would take us a couple of months with the state procurement process. And then understanding, we actually would step back a little bit and do an RFI because we're requests for information. We look to the experts that do actuarial studies to help us to identify what is needed for the proposal when we do a true analysis on an actuarial study, similar to what was done with work comp and TDI through Mr. Reisenfeld or your doctor, Dr. Reisenfeld.
Okay. Has the department conducted an actuarial study in another program or existing program or proposed program in recent, maybe, I don't know, years, so that I could get a kind of reference as to how much, you know, these studies do cost on average?
We have not been successful. Back in 2017, 2018, the legislators provided us $250,000 to go and do a closed case analysis, an actual analytical report on workers' compensations, closed cases. And we did not receive any bidders on the $250,000. And so that was, that's kind of where, I know that some people look at these numbers and say that it's a little high, but for people to do actual analysis, it is in-depth. And so we're hoping that we will get something for the $500,000 on what is proposed here.
Okay, very good. For the $750,000, that was outlined in this $1.5 million. I believe the state of Hawaii had several studies done before. The, I think, most recent one was 2019, where the legislature appropriated $350,000 to have that conducted. I'm just curious, what do you think will be different? What's, what's something new that you expect to find in this new study?
We're hoping with the new study that we will have Hawaii-specific data, as well as understanding the interplays between the federal and the state, code of federal rules, as well as the state laws. And so...
I thought that's what the $250,000 was for, is to look at the federal and state laws and how they may conflict or complement each other.
And then the part of the study would provide for the language.
Okay.
And so it's kind of a breakdown. We have a legal and regulatory review, comparative analysis, which is the compliance requirements, and then facilitation, eligibility criteria, benefit duration and payments. So really studying the different states on, that have the programs and what their benefit duration is and the payments that are paid out, what is covered, as well as the claims process and the appeals. We want to be able to, once we have a program in place, be able to start and not still trying to figure out what that process would look like. And so if we have all of the processes in place, as well as the implementation framework, which is how many program staff is really needed, we know what we've estimated according to what our unemployment insurance division has, but what is the actual amount that a consultant would feel, as well as what is needed for the IT programs. And so we have currently a program that has also a portal factor with it. And so how are we going to start this off? And so it's the IT development, public awareness, and reporting requirements.
Okay. And setting aside the substance and appropriations of this request, right? Best-case scenario, a few months for the RFP to be out, you guys get, you know, some interests, and then the study would actually begin, which I assume would, you know, sounds like a lot of work. So I assume best-case scenario, a year, right? So that's a year and a half. So this would be done, what, 2028?
2028. We would have, best-case scenario, yes, we come in 2026 and we start it. Once we get the RFP in place, in my thoughts is, for the study to begin, we would like this working group to meet with the consultants, to be able to give their expertise or their understanding of their positions on, from the different employer, employees, labor unions, so that the consultants themselves kind of understand where we are here in Hawaii, what understanding we have. So when they go out and do their studies and their analysis, they know what to be looking at, look a little bit more in-depth into certain areas that I think we have gaps in.
Okay, no, thank you. I think that helped clarify some of the concerns there. Though admittedly, you know, I do still have some concerns of, right, just redoing the previous work that we've already done. And I do have concerns about, right, the consultants that we do contract with and comparing their work to, say, work that we could be doing in the meantime, reaching out to other states that do have a paid family leave program, right? I think, yes, consultants are great, but they are expensive, and, you know, I think it's up to our responsibility too, to do the due diligence, not only for the department, but, you know, for the rest of the state that obviously really wants this program in place. But I could appreciate that you want to do the best prep work you can before embarking on this really complicated and expensive program.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions.
Members, any other comments or questions? Members, any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to SCR 55, related to the review for boiler and elevator inspection brands. First to testify is Jay Bhutai, Director of DLIR, in support, in person.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and Representative Jeanne Capella. We stand on our testimony in strong support. There are 10,000 boilers and pressure vessels and 8,000 elevators that we have to inspect statewide. It's a responsibility that we do not take lightly. This is a public safety issue, where when one hurt, we all hurt. We want to prevent tragedies like what happened at the UH Manoa lab. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up, Brenna Hashimoto, Director of DHEARD, with comments, in person.
Good morning again, Chair and Vice Chair. Brenna Hashimoto from DHEARD. I'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and I would just like to reiterate that we believe the appropriate agency to spearhead this study would be the Department of Labor, since it is their program. However, we're, of course, willing and able to help them with the HR analysis, the compensation and the classification issues. We stand ready to support them in that part of the study.
Thank you. Next to testify, Javier Pomorink, Otis Elevator Company, in support, in person.
Javier with Otis Elevator, I stand in support.
Thanks Javier. Next up, Billy Taylor, Director of Government Affairs for the National Elevator Industry, in support on Zoom.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Billy Taylor, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the National Elevator Industry, or NEI. We're the trade association for those major elevator manufacturers and service companies. And in fact, several of our member companies are in the room with you today to share their experiences from a local operations perspective. NEI submitted a detailed written statement for the record, which I encourage you to review, but I'd like to make just a quick, a couple key points. And there's no other way to put it, but the lack of available elevator inspectors is having a negative impact to the state's business environment. Our companies are facing significant impediments to their operations. The issue has resulted in what is now unmanageable wait times for inspections, sometimes three to four months in some cases, which is creating a growing backlog in new installation turnover, and is making modernizations increasingly difficult. For these reasons, NEI urges this committee to support SCR 55 in obtaining the information needed to improve the elevator program. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify on this resolution, in person or on Zoom? Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Darren Hamasaki. I am the Operations Manager for Shinle Elevator, and we are here in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Michael Nagal, General Manager, Kone Elevators and Escalators, 30 years of elevator industry experience. Kone is a member of NEI and is in full support of Senate Concurrent Resolution 55. The challenges and hardships in scheduling and completing required inspections and tests are real, and in turn, negatively impacts and causes frustration to homeowners' associations, business owners, and the general public. So mahalo. We humbly ask for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else to testify? Go ahead.
Morning, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. I am Chuck Decoito. I am the Hawaii Branch Operations Manager for TK Elevator. My experience in this industry has been slightly less than 45 years in this business, and have been in full support of NEI, Billy Taylor, the rest of our elevator contractors here in the state of Hawaii, as we represent pretty much a huge variety of homeowners' associations, hotels, resort locations, and condominiums, where not only does it put an impact on the industry as far as getting inspections and valid permits and et cetera, it also puts the burden on the homeowners' association of these facilities and hotel communities. TK, as long as well as everybody else here, are in full support of the SCR 55. I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Yasmeen Chaney. I'm going to testify on my personal capacity. There are two elevators in the state office tower building that I work in that are out of order, and the other elevators regularly break down. And I am usually quite worried when I get in the elevator that I will be stuck and unable to perform my job duties. So any support you could lend to this industry would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments or questions, members? Moving on to SCR 67 SD1, related to mental health. First to testify is Brenna Hashimoto, DHEARD, in support.
Good morning again, Brenna Hashimoto for DHEARD. I'll stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Catherine Ammer, Council Chairperson for the State Council on Mental Health and Department of Health, in support, in person.
Hi, Catherine Ammer, Chair of the State Council on Mental Health. I'm offering our testimony in strong support of Senate Concurrent Resolution 67. Our council recognizes that the ongoing workforce shortage in Hawaii's public mental health system is not merely an HR issue, it is a community health crisis. Critical vacancies across the departments, including health, education, human services, corrections, and judiciary, are preventing residents from accessing timely, appropriate mental health services. These shortages directly contribute and exacerbate staff burnout, service disruptions, and widening health disparities, especially in our rural and neighboring islands. We support the resolution's call for greater collaboration across state agencies and the Department of Health and Human, excuse me, Human Resources Development, to modernize the hiring practices. Mahalo for your consideration and for your support, especially in strengthening our mental health care system, and we're here for any comments or questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to testify in person or on Zoom? We also received testimony from one individual. Members, any comments or questions? Moving on to SCR 135, related to wellness and resiliency and data sharing. We have Tia Harstok, Director of Office of Wellness and Resilience, in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We want to stand on our testimony and support, and we also want to further discuss the dated dashboards that we've created, the social determinants of health dashboards that we've created, which could conceivably really help support the further analysis of these dashboards, and look at collaborating further with the departments. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Director. That's all the testimony we have. Was there anyone else to testify on Zoom or in person? Members, any comments or questions?
Director? Can you talk about, if you, how your partnership is going with departments like DOE, and what that looks like, and if something like this would be helpful, and I guess bridging and building more gap, or I guess bridging and filling the gaps that we're certainly seeing along, like, wellness and resilience in our, like, rural DOE schools?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that question. I think the partnership between most of the departments has been great. And people are very interested in the data. They're interested in finding ways to continue the conversation around sharing data. There has been challenges over years because of concerns around privacy and HIPAA regulations, and so some of the efforts that have been happening for several years have been assisting those conversations to further. This type of information in this REZO could help continue the conversation and open up more opportunities for the departments and our office to find creative, innovative ways to share data. I think it's, it's been an interest in departments for years, not only within the departments but outside the departments, to more comprehensively understand how services can be better appropriated, better delivered, and better comprehensive continuum across that, that care system. So I think it could, it could, it could help support those additional conversations. There's a lot of data out there, and oftentimes we really look at apples to oranges, and finding ways to look at apples to apples could be more helpful. Yeah. Thank you for that question.
Thank you for the work you're doing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving on to SCR 163 SD1, relating to land use efficiency. First to testify, Keith Rogan, Comptroller for Dags, in support, in person. Not here. We also received testimony from the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. Is there anyone else here to testify in person or on Zoom? Questions or comments, members? Okay. And lastly, moving on to SCR 143, related to performance reviews for executive directors or similar exempt positions. We received no testimony for this one. Members, comments or questions? Okay, we're going to recess for decision-making. Thank you. Okay. We're reconvening the House Committee on Labor for decision-making. First, we have SCR 63. My recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 63, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Garrett, excused. Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Rayzoda?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to SCR 145 SD1, recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 145 SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Yep. Thank you. Next up is SCR 55. Recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 55, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, SCR 67 SD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 67 SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next up, SCR 135 SD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 135 SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. SCR 163 SD1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 163 SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, lastly, SCR 143. Recommendation is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote?
Voting on SCR 143 SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. This committee is adjourned.